Really, this has two-fold effect, again, making history and having it here. But also to try to bring some publicity to the library and hopefully some of the people that watch our meetings will actually come in and visit and use it. So, we're hoping that she'll see more activity from this.
Thank you.
Great. Next, we're gonna go to Jeff Margolis. Jeff, I'm not gonna give a full biography, other than I understand you play some pretty heavy new music.
Thank you.
But that's, that's not your day job.
No, nor is web design yet, but hopefully it will be at some point. So, when I lost my job last year for Virdens Middle School, I decided I wanted to explore the avenues and get into web development and design. And when I sort of accidentally emailed Mel, Mel gave me some encouragement and the go-ahead to start working with himself and Joan and Mike and Judy to create a new website for the city. And before I show you what I've been working on, and Judy's been putting quite a lot of content building onto, this is what we have right now. This is our current website. It's hosted by Gov...can't read what it says.
Gov Office.
GovOffice.com. Didn't give us a whole lot of control over our content, did have a content management system, but didn't give us any bigger photos. Oops, that's not gonna help us at all. And had a lot of redundancies trying to move through things. If we wanna find out about the farmer's market on the green, well then we get a link to the farmer's market. And then we finally get to our content. So, had some things there that felt we could clean up and also offer a few different things. Especially if you notice up top, the URL that you get up here is a lot of gibberish. That makes it very difficult for Google and other search engines to find it, so we figured you could clean that up a bit. We could provide a bit more navigability, bigger pictures, and be more cost-effective. This is going to end up costing about a quarter of what it costs to host it on cities.gov. So, that's where we were, and this is where we are. So, we've got more of a three-column layout, like a newspaper here for our index, our homepage, as our mayor's welcome, city news, and Google custom search. So, we have Google power to search the site. And it'll probably take a little while to sort of reorient yourself, if you're used to using the site, to what's where now. But we built it with a few different audiences in mind. We thought that it should be for both residents and tourists, and also be for council members because they're often looking here and wanna know, this is where you're gonna go. For agendas and minutes, as Mel posts them now, gave them a dedicated spot under government. And just browse through a couple of other things around the homepage here. Just add an RSS feed to this, so if you'd like to know what's going on on this website, what's being posted, you can add it to your RSS feed, and you will always have access to the ten most recent articles on Virdens.org. And we've got some FAQs that randomly generate here. We added some other related sites, the schools, service organizations, public service, and our bordering towns. And we've even got a little weather sticker here to check out Virdens' weather all the time from Wondergrind.com. So, just a quick browse through here. We made annual events and made them navigable both from the front page, and once you get there...there we go. Made them load a little faster by putting everything that we had similar content together and flipping them in this JavaScript fashion with the tabs. You can see they flipped through without reloading the page. All the content moves much more quickly through. We've also created businesses listings that hopefully will create a short guide to what's in Virdens. It's a little hard to read on the screen, but restaurants and bars, lots of retail. And we're hoping to get a better look and feel for these pages as businesses catch on, that they can be well represented here. These are just text, but you can see that some places have photos, and the more photos we get from vendors, the better this will look. This one looks particularly nice. We got a bunch of good photos we were able to grab off lodging and campground pages. And I'm sure we've left a lot off. Some other important features, probably the government tabs, where the first tab is City Council, and I just have a dummy City Council Agenda link here, but you'll find those links here. This looks a lot like the old page. Planning Commission links, Minutes and Agendas, we go here, and Development Board right under there. Our list of all the folks on the council and the Planning Commission, Justice of Peace, and we need to actually link this to our city ordinances, but that's the look for the link. Made a quick guide to churches as well, MAC, and some of the churches in our town, both for historical and practical purposes. Let's see. We have four most recent posts from the city voice located here. We've got a community calendar that we can update here, and they take us to individual write-ups for each of the events. And we have a contact form that is above all secure. It is checked on the server side, not client side, but on the server side. If it gets information it doesn't like, it will not send it to us, and that's very important so that we can not have to worry about people attacking the database. This is really the only way into the site. And we've got a few folks on here, folks that have been working on it that you can contact, and traditional contact as well. And that's most of what we have, I suppose. We're just hoping to sort of continue to update and fill in as we need, and if people want to contact us with more content or photos, I took most of the photos that are cycling through here. I'm not very much of a photographer, so if people have photos, we can certainly add those as well.
One of the things that, Jeff, I think you may have skipped over, but all the businesses that have webpages?
Yep.
You click on their name and you will go to their link.
Yep.
You'll link right to their webpage.
So, either here or the photo.
There's free advertisement.
Well, not that one, that one's hooked up to the picture. But if we go, I think if we go to Bar Andodo, we should go to Bar Andodo. Yep, that'll take us to the site. And it takes it in another tab. They all open in other tabs so that we can have people continue to keep the Virdens.org site open as well. And the search works pretty nicely, pretty happy with it. Gonna have to reinstall it when we put the new site in, or when we actually turn it over to Virdens.org rather than this little development URL that it's at right now. But, works pretty well.
This, this is not live yet. We still have a little, well, not a little, a lot to load, both the businesses and don't realize how many businesses there are in the city of Virdens themselves. You start putting them into the system, and there's a lot. And other things, minutes, agendas, and that sort of thing, we wanna get this loaded on. But Jeff has put in numerous hours getting it where it is, and Judy as well has put in numerous hours of testing and debugging and emailing back. One is usually awake early in the morning working on it, and the other one's late at night fixing the things that she funds that's morning, so it's a cycle of things. Joan and Judy have met and played around with it a little bit to see about loading it. I think they're gonna probably need another meeting to actually get some more information on, but, so...
Yeah, we're just really, it's just a little bit of content away. And I'm hoping since it takes one to two weeks just to really actually get it live at the Virdens.org URL, hopefully that's only a few weeks away.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, it looks fabulous, by the way.
Thanks.
Couple of questions. Like I noticed, under service organizations, the one that Mel and I belong to is not up there. How do people contact you to...and also, I know some businesses that...
We're expecting a lot of people to contact us and say...
Are you contacting businesses, I guess was the question, and...
We haven't got to that state and figured that one out yet.
Yeah.
But, yeah, just getting to where we are has been, like I said, numerous of hours. We need to build this. We're hoping that combination of the TV, word of mouth from the council, just get the information out there. We're hoping Andy would be here tonight too, to take this fall and expose it because we're stepping outside the city of Virdens. We're going B.C. Motorsports and other organizations, or other businesses. This is, this is about free advertisement and get what is good in and around Virdens so that people got a one-stop shopping sort of thing. So, yes, I didn't answer your question.
And if you do wanna get in touch, I mean, I anticipate a lot of folks wanting to get in touch and say, can we get some representation or change our representation, right on the contact page, I'm at the bottom here. Webmaster sent me an email and let me know what you wanna see and where you'd like to see it, and you can make it happen.
We can't get through this yet, so we can't contact you through the site.
No, not just yet. I can give you my email address after.
Or send something to me and I'll pass it on.
Yep, but as soon as it's live, you'll be able to click there and anything you wanna do, because, I mean, most of the businesses don't really have much of a write-up, but the ones that do certainly look better, and the ones that have the photo. I'm anticipating those folks to contact us with photos and what sort of, you know, paragraph they like about their business.
Like the banks and that sort of thing.
It was a lot of work to organize this, to organize everything in the city and decide what's a service organization and what's a business and what's in Virdens and what isn't, and that was one of the major problems with it. Also, cross browsing, testing took up a lot of time. This should work pretty well all the way back to Internet Explorer Six. So, it should be very accessible, and I've also worked hard to make it lightweight so that people with dial-up connections, of which there are many in Addison County, can still have a fairly accessible experience with the site. Any other questions, ideas?
We will have to work on how we communicate that. I don't know if, we have all the mailings, I don't know if we can get them to do something.
Go to a chamber meeting and tell them.
That'd be a good one.
Yep.
Okay. So, where can...
I gotta find out if they got internet over it.
Where do they have their meetings now? Legion?
That's Legion, yeah.
We'll have to figure out how we can connect because it's really, the way to do it is this way here, through either a projector or a laptop at the meeting. Because we can go out through a particular URL and get on to this and maneuver it, so we can actually do a dog and form show of what's, what's there. So, I can try to find out when the next meeting's gonna be and see if we can work some, something and connect a show, so...
What, I don't know if it was on or it didn't happen, it was a quick two pretty quick, but the act our schedule, the mass transit schedule, bus schedule from Middlebury to Burlington, is that accessible through the site?
That's not on there right now.
Again, there's stuff that's not there we wanna add, and this, these are all good points that, by all means.
It's hard to think of all the stuff. Yeah, that certainly seems like it would have a good place here in our Related Sites section somewhere. And of course, we can always add sections, whatever it takes to make this to be as full a guide as possible to the area. Yeah, that was a great idea.
This is so good.
Great.
This is better than the Legion.
Really good, yep.
It's spent in chambers. It's, it's got everything on it, and it's so user-friendly.
I hope so, I hope so. It's hard to tell, you know, we haven't really tested enough with the audience yet, you know, we've all been staring at it since the beginning of the summer. So, we seem to think it drives okay, but, you know, you'll have to let us know if you think otherwise or have other ideas for it.
Any other comments or questions, ideas? We'll have to figure out how we're gonna, other than try to get to a chamber meeting, also find if there's another way to approach some of the business. I don't know if we can, we'll, we'll talk about this after.
There you go.
With Joan and, and Mel and Judy and see what our best approach is, the burdens on the city to figure out.
Right, I built the structure, now you get to fill it up.
It, it takes hours and hours. She worked, Judy worked, I don't know, from early thirty on Saturday till midday, and then I had to fire her off the keyboard, and I think that was due stress, but...
We'll get it.
We'll get it.
Yep.
So, hopefully you like what you see, and we can only build it, make it, or add to it, make it better. So, Jeff, we really wanna extend our sincere thanks to you for everything you do. We owe you a lot for everything. This is really where we wanted to go, where we need to be as a city, so, very, very, very good.
Great, thank you, thanks for the opportunity.
We're not done yet.
No, I know.
Yeah, we gotta listen. This is very good.
Great.
Okay.
I'll let you guys, what about the rest of the business?
Thank you again.
All right.
Anybody that has any comments, questions that they haven't brought to the table or maybe don't want it on television, you have my email address. If you have some other suggestions, send it to us. We'll see what we can do to make it work, or tell you, we've already tried it, did it...
Yeah, why it might not, right?
Okay, great. Um, let's see, website, okay. Warrants, they've been passed around and signed. Do we have enough signatures on those? We do, one, two, three, four.
Yeah, one of the things is, as usual, you know, as I mentioned at the last meeting, we'd like to pay our bills, so not all the bills are processed when we put this warrant together for you. In this case, it was put together for you last Wednesday, and so there are some additional, I don't know, Joan, I think, I don't know if they got hinted out, if that's in the packet, the additional bills that got added to, to the warrant.
I don't see yet.
Yeah, I think there's probably just on, on, on top. There was probably maybe ten or twelve bills that came in. Obviously, we haven't met for quite a while, so I think it's a record-setting as far as weight-wise, the number of bills are getting paid here, that again, since we haven't met for months.
Well, the, a couple of questions that I had.
Sure.
I think I figured a couple out, I actually talked to the police chief about a couple of them, so I understand. Water of Virdens Day, was that possibly a race?
Yeah, there was a bill for water.
Page three, second item down. I take it that must have been for the race?
Yep, that's for the race, yep.
Okay. Uh, next item down, KME Fire, new fire truck.
They certainly didn't buy a new fire truck, so that had to be something.
I was hoping for nine hundred and some odd dollars.
That was a good deal, yeah.
I didn't know if that was related, because I know that, I heard rumors that they bought some tires, and I see down below at Rouse's that there's...
Tires.
Tires. So, is that for the fire truck?
Yeah, I don't think that the KME is, I don't believe KME is just tires. I don't believe that's the case.
And have we gone out of our, our warranty?
On the new trucks?
On the new trucks?
By the way, the warranty works, Mike, actually, on, on the trucks that we bought from Brindleton, is there is thirty thousand dollars worth of warranty. However, it kicks in after three thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, like if there was like a major transmission failure and a twenty thousand dollar bill, there is in essence a three thousand dollar deductible.
Okay.
So, not everything, it's not quite like a new car.
Okay, understood. I'll take care of my questions. Anybody else?
I have a question.
Chris.
Why did we rent a sewer truck, septic truck?
Uh, when we, at a pump station, we'll have to pump those out. We don't have a suction truck, so on occasion we do that, clean out wet wells.
Okay, in the other words, where did we plant new hosted junipers and boxwoods?
In front of City Hall and a little bit at the park. There was a Terry, we put Terry Weiss, like we didn't put her to work, she volunteers to work, so there was a few that died, Christine, in front of City Hall, and so that, those got replaced, and there was a couple down in the city park as well.
It's actually one that I picked up and I missed, forgot to look at my notes. I asked for a motion for approval of the minutes for both the public hearing and the city council meeting on August seventeenth, two thousand and ten.
I will make that motion.
Mel made the motion, we have a second. Chris, second sit. Any corrections, missions, or errors? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Any other issues on the budget?
The, obviously, we're only a couple of months into the year. Probably the number that, that jumps most off the page, as I mentioned before, I probably can't use this excuse very much longer because I've been here a couple of years, but I still do have sticker shock on certain things. In the public works budget, the budget that I put together, I mean, I fully intended to do the stretch on New Haven Road, and, and the budget that I used really was clearly insufficient to do that entire project. And when I, when I say the entire project, you know, I don't play around with the numbers. You know, if you're doing a sidewalk project, and if you're buying crushed stone, and if it's related to sidewalks, it gets charged to that line item. The concrete goes to that line item. When we have to repave people's aprons, it goes to that line item. So, all of those costs, topsoil, grass seed, anything related to a sidewalk project gets charged to sidewalks. It's really the only way that I'm gonna regain my knowledge of what it costs to do a sidewalk project, because it's not just, it's not just concrete. So, the line item in the public works you'll see is way over budget. I think we only budgeted five or six thousand dollars, and it's, you know, whatever, fifteen thousand dollars. This just shows that that's what it costs to, to do that, to do that project. So, you know, we're done for this year, there isn't any more work being done. The only, I shouldn't say that, the only other sidewalk project that we're contemplating, and if we go ahead and do this, we would reach to the tower fund. There is, the whole section in front of City Hall is really in bad shape. It's a dangerous situation. There's some major potholes, if you will, to that section. And I've talked to Carol about doing it, and I, I just don't wanna do it unless we can absolutely finish it, you know, before winter. Get it done and, and put to bed before bad weather, and that's one of the problems that we have is, you know, we still have to do lawn mowing, we still have to do the garbage, we still have to do, you know, other public works efforts, sewer breaks, whatever, so that's one of the, it is cheaper for us to do sidewalk work. The problem is, is that there's a lot of distractions, so it takes us a little longer. So, I still would like to do that project, but it's really about, you know, whether or not we can get it in before, before winter. But there's no other, there's no other projects for the, for the rest of this fiscal year.
If, if they're, if they're able to fit it in, I know that you opened your bid on your Main Street.
Yep.
Might you, why people are in town, look at, have them take a price?
Sure, yeah.
I mean, if the price is right, why they get the equipment here?
Yeah, I'll, I'll talk about that project, Mike, you know, it's, it's strange. We bid out the streetscape project, and I can remember telling you that my budget on that project was a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, which included, you know, some design expense, so, you know, basically a hundred and fifty-plus thousand is what we figured. And the way that I derived that was, the project that was in front of Classic Stitching, Marble Works, and Tullops was fifty-two thousand dollars. And that was really a fairly simple, straightforward project, and this was, has more linear feet, more complicated, more like a Ryan Block type project. The Ryan Block, talked to Timmy the other day, he shared his numbers with me, and the Ryan Block project was about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, that's how I, in essence, derived this hundred and fifty thousand. We did let out six or seven sets of plans, we ended up with three bidders, and the low bidder was a company called Down-to-Earth Landscaping out of Morrisville. They've done some work in Colchester, we are, we're checking on references. I don't have the bids memorized, but I believe their bid was eighty-five thousand four hundred, half of what I was anticipating. Second-place bid was a company out of Middlebury, K Street Ready Mix, which was a hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, and I do have it memorized. And the, and the high bidder was Don Weston Excavating at one hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And when you get those kinds of bids, it, it really makes you scratch your head about whether or not our plans were clear enough to be able to, for folks to intelligently bid. And I had Norm LeBeff, I actually met with Wayne Wheeler from Down-to-Earth today, he met, went over the project for about an hour and a half with Norman, and again, we still wanna check references, still need to get insurance, get insurance certificates on the company, but if all of those things are fine, we'll, we'll award that contract to them. They're ready to rock and roll and get that project done before winter. So, you know, it's funny, it's good to get, it's good to have competition, and it's good to get what appear to be competitive bids, but when they come in so low, it's, you know... But one of the things that we, I spoke to them today is, because of cost, we did not include that whole corner, you know, there, all that brickwork and existing concrete that bow, that bow, that we just felt that we just couldn't afford it. And now with this budget, we can't. And I think that, you know, we can add that additional work so that granite curbing goes all the way around that bow bout, the bricks, the right kind of bricks get reset, and, and, you know, one of the things I really don't wanna do, the state's probably listening, listening to me, but it's, you know, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar grant, and like in the case of the, in the case of the, of the project in front of Classic Stitching, the city got a thirty thousand dollar grant, and the project cost fifty-two thousand dollars, and so we got reimbursed twenty-six thousand dollars. So, we left four thousand dollars worth of grant money on the table. So, you know, I don't like to leave grant money on the table, you know, if there's something that, that we can wrap into the project and have it be paid fifty cents and a dollar. So, we're gonna, we're gonna look at that as an add-on, because I think it really would, if we don't do that, I think the project's gonna look incomplete. I think it'll look better if we, if we sweep all the way around the corner and have it, have it totally upgraded. So, you should, if anything turns out good, we, you should see some action there very quickly.
Mel, you made the comment of the right kind of brick.
Yeah.
Okay, because I know the other brick on, that's been set on this side started deteriorating probably within a year and a half, two years after.
In front of where?
Like Citizens Bank?
Terrible, yep, yep, yep.
And so, I kept saying, well, here we go, now we gotta repair it again. I mean, it hadn't been down three years.
Right.
So, now you're saying there's a, there are, there's some type of brick that we don't have to worry about it breaking up?
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say that, but I certainly am familiar with the, with the situation over there, and the way that, you know, that one over there was done with mortar and whatever, and, and the brick that we're using, this enhancement, you know, there really isn't, there really isn't cement in between the bricks. It's all, you know, tight, tight to one another.
The brick itself is also deteriorating and breaking up.
Right, yeah, they need, they obviously need to be extremely salt-retarded, and that's what it sounds like, the brick that was selected there. And I'm not seeing the deterioration in the, in the other places where we've used brick, you know, down in front of the stone block, Ryan Block, I'm not seeing it, so I'm assuming that that's, was a better, was a better material.
There is some movement down in front of this block over here where the, the brick is actually settling.
Settling, yeah.
Needs to be picked out and reset.
Okay.
Chris?
Now, you talk about these, the ball bouts there. Somebody was talking to me the other day about the foliage in front of everywhere.
Yeah.
That it needs to be trimmed up.
Yeah, I've, I've talked, the way that, I don't know if there's any formal agreement, I've talked to Deirdre Barbo on a couple of occasions. She, it's owned by Dalton Fitzgerald, but she's my, she's the contact person, and because it's my understanding that when that was done, the, the property owners had the responsibility, and I, I have her email address, so I'll remind her that she needs to do that, because it does creep, it creeps out into the...
And you can't see people standing behind it.
Out, out on the ball bout?
At the very end, yeah.
I've seen people almost getting killed there.
Yeah, and quite often, people will actually turn to go down that road, and they'll cut it short enough that they'll go over, and their back tire will drop off the sidewalk. So, it's, hear that thump?
Yeah.
It's like, did they hit somebody?
Yeah, well, I'll contact her, I, you know, I mean, that's really what the deal is, you know, obviously, if it, you know, if it doesn't get done, you know, the city's gonna have to do it, you know, it's, it's out in our, it's out in our street, but that, that's, it's my understanding is that's what the deal was, you know, the, the property owners wanted that.
That ball bout, they built, they built up that, there's a mound there.
Yeah, mound of dirt there, they could drop it down.
If they reduced half the mound, it would help the, would help things.
That's part of the rolling hills of Vermont, Randy.
Yeah, the rolling hills of Vermont.
But anyway, it's, it's still early on the budget, obviously, you know, we're only a couple of months, uh, couple of months in. I'm, I'm so anxious to talk about the pool, Mike, but I'll, I'll wait until my manager's report.
Let's see, calm down, calm down. We got him wound up, so we're just have to give him a little bit of a break, we'll get, we'll have, we'll have him back here in just a second. Um, we're gonna, does anybody have any questions, Mel, about budget? Like you said, it's, it's really early, okay. Gonna go right to committees and I'm gonna start with Chris. Um, anything?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, we, all right. Lowell, we'll go to you.
I have nothing.
Nothing on the fishing? You're gonna, Mel's gonna do the poll?
No, it's gonna be.
Poll thing? And you guys have still got something else to put together? You're still working on a project? Okay? Ziggy? Towns?
Nothing going on with them.
Seniors?
No.
Okay. Um, later on, we'll talk about the haunted forest. Uh, so, it's, well, then we'll, there's nobody here for a public comment. Go to old business, uh, appointing, appoint them to the planning commission.
Yeah, I wanna just talk about, I mentioned this in my, uh, in my cover memo, I'll, I wanna talk about A and C at the same time. Uh, relative to planning commission, uh, the, the planning commission vacancy, we had five people come forward, uh, interested in that, uh, remaining seat, if you will. Uh, do keep in mind that, you know, we by design operate, uh, both the development review board and the planning commission with seven members. Uh, on the planning commission, you can have not less than three, nor more than nine voting members. And there was a time when, when Tyler Goss, Stacy Raphael, and Alex came forward when there was two vacancies and, uh, the city council, uh, appointed all three. And they did operate with, um, uh, eight members on the board. And then, of course, Mark Hatler, uh, went off the board, Neil Curtis went off the board, and that's how we got to the six. And so, we have one vacancy, but you could say, if you wanted to enlarge the board to nine, to have three. What I, uh, would, would like to do, um, is the, uh, we do have a, uh, presentation on October sixth, uh, relative to the Panton Road intersection at seven o'clock. And what I'd like to do is have the city council hold a special meeting on October sixth at city hall. Uh, you know, six o'clock, six fifteen, Joe, I know sometimes six o'clock might be tough for you, I think, I think.
Should be around on Wednesday.
Is that on Wednesday?
Uh, Wednesday.
Yeah.
Obviously, we're missing Lions, uh, Joe, on, on that night. Uh, uh, but anyway, I, the, uh, the five people have been interviewed and, um, the group, you know, does have a recommendation, but, you know, certainly Alex McGuire wants to come and meet with the city council and discuss the five candidates and, and make that recommendation to the board and have that discussion, uh, in executive session in advance of the, of the council, uh, presumably taking action on them.
Any comments on Mel's request?
What time, earlier?
Six, six o'clock.
Six o'clock? Under six.
Right.
If, if there is no heavy disagreement, I will call for a meeting October sixth, six P M, city hall, Mel's office.
Uh, under six C, uh, the Mahawi, that was on our agenda for a long time and then, uh, taken off the agenda because it was remanded to the D R B. Uh, and remember that the, the Mahawi, you know, they made an application, it was denied, they appealed it to environmental court. Uh, they came back with a second application that was fairly similar to the first, but had enough difference that the city attorney felt that it could be, uh, reviewed as a, uh, as a separate application. That got denied as well and that too was appealed to environmental court. And, uh, the development review board has never reopened the hearing and that's because there has been multiple requests by Mahawi to, uh, continue. And that's because they've had some conflicts. But recently, they have put forth a proposed settlement, uh, in essence, of both of those appeals. And what I wanna do is bring that, uh, proposal to the city council on October sixth as well. In essence, what it is, it's a, uh, proposal that would, um, uh, in essence, uh, you know, settle these two cases with, uh, with an approval and conditions which the board, uh, which the city council will need to review in executive session, uh, if the city council is interested in settling. Obviously, if the city council's not interested in settling, then there is no settlement agreement and the matter proceeds, uh, through the court system. And I'll be able to send you out, uh, in advance of the meeting, you know, so you aren't, you know, blindsided with this proposal. Uh, uh, I'll get that out in, you know, in advance of the October sixth meeting. So, I, I think that we can do both of those in an hour, or actually in fifty minutes, because we need walking time to get to the, get to the fire station for that meeting. So, I think that we should be okay with that.
Okay. So, we will cover this other subject, Mahi, Ahai, Hawee, LLC's appeal on October sixth as well. So, those, that'll be in, in the agenda.
So, where are we gonna meet at six o'clock?
At six o'clock, at Mel's office. And then, seven o'clock, we'll be moving to the fire station for the.
Panton Road.
Panton Road intersection discussion. Okay? All right.
Uh, six, six B, uh, we're gonna leave this on old business until the leaves fall off the trees. Uh, Tim Cowan went out there and took a look at it and came back to me and, uh, said, uh, to do topo on that area is gonna be extremely expensive, you know, when you can't see more than six feet in front of you. So, uh, and I s, I communicated with Bill Benton to let him know that, you know, we, uh, we would really prefer to save some money, uh, and get the, uh, get the topo done a little bit cheaper. He understands that. So, it probably will be a couple of months, Mike, before we have that. Uh, apparently, it's, it's not as though the Boys and Girls Club is trying to meet some deadline and some grant application and they need this matter settled and designed or anything. So, uh, Bill said that that's fine. So, uh, we'll, uh, we will proceed just as soon as, as we can do so, uh, a little bit more, uh, um, more efficiently for, uh, for the survey, for the surveyor.
Any other questions or discussion on that? Dot, we're gonna jump right to, uh, city manager's report.
Uh, just a couple of topics, uh, I, I spoke about the streetscape project, you'll see some action there. Uh, train project, uh, I believe that that, uh, is, I know they're still waiting on something from Act two fifty, but it's my understanding, uh, that the building has been turned over from, uh, the, uh, railway to V Trans. So, that document came down to Joan's office a week or so ago, so things are still moving along.
They, they have officially assigned BGS Buildings and General Services to the, as the owner and, uh, they have signed a project manager who is very enthused about this project. And, uh, he's, he's really got a plate full, but, uh, I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it on the side, but I will see. Uh, by the sounds of, from my boss today, this probably won't happen this winter.
Okay.
It, it, well, everything's built.
The first winter hasn't made.
No, so, well, just, we haven't, we haven't received the prints yet.
Okay.
We, I was told that Big Building, Buildings and General Service has not received a print yet, so.
Uh, the other, uh, things I wanna mention is about, uh, obviously the auditors were here on, uh, I think it was September one and September two. Our, our goal was to not have them there on September three. Uh, in the past, they've spent, you know, both people have been, spent three full days, uh, at city hall. Uh, the goal was to have them, uh, be here in only two, which obviously, you know, to be able to pull it off, you know? Joan and I need to have our, uh, our house in order and, and, and it was. And so, they were only here a couple of longer days, uh, but did get them out of here in two days. Uh, one of the things I mentioned to you, and I will get you the financial statement as soon as they're available to us, but I can remember when you all were setting the tax rate and the, the balance forward and I was telling you, it looked like, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred thousand. The, uh, I actually, the way that, uh, the way that they address delinquent taxes is just a little bit differently than the way that I thought. Cause I thought that the way that you, in essence, took into account delinquent taxes is you, we know what we bill and then what you do is you subtract all of the den, delinquents and then you add in, uh, the money that you collected in the first sixty days. And what actually happens is, is, uh, you do take into account everything you bill, but then you just compare how you did this year to how you did the year before. And, uh, it's just the way that, it's, it's about deferred, it's about deferred revenue. And what happened is, uh, obviously, we did have a couple of tax sales. So, like, a year ago, we ended the year with fifty-five thousand dollars and, uh, and within the first sixty days, we collected all but thirty-two thousand dollars, which, you know, isn't too bad. This year, we ended the year with forty-one thousand dollars and after the first sixty days, we collected all but fourteen thousand eighty-two dollars. So, our delinquents are, you know, delinquent taxes are extremely low. And so, what happens is, is that improved delinquency falls to the bottom line. So, what ended up happening is, uh, and I, I am somewhat embarrassed about this, but I can't control the good weather that we had last winter. The, the fun, the general fund, fund balance that you're gonna see in these financial statements is two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. All right, it's a big, it's a big number. Uh, we're using a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to offset taxes and catch up on paving, all right? So, you know, basically, I think when you all made that decision, we felt that there was still gonna be sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars uh, of a cushion while that, that sixty to sixty-five thousand has turned into a hundred, uh, a hundred thousand dollars. So, anyway, that's that news.
We're gonna use it this year.
I, I hope, I hope not, Randy.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually.
The other, uh, I just wanna talk a little bit about, about the pool and I know this is a little bit of a sea of numbers. Uh, you know, there's, there's nobody, buddy, there's nobody that's been more anxious to get a season's worth of numbers out of this pool, all right? And of course, part of the, as I've mentioned to you in the past, the problem is, is that the pool season crosses fiscal years. And so, what I have to do is grab the period of time that it was open the last fiscal year and then take a look at the, the, uh, expenses for this, uh, fiscal year. Now, one of the things on the revenue stream, the, uh, uh, they, the, our auditors do use the accrual basis of accounting, which to me is, I guess they have to do that, but, you know, you know, it seems like a, uh, work that really, you don't really gain anything, cause I'm just gonna add the two numbers together to find out what it costs for a season's worth of business. The point being is like when somebody buys a season's pass on July twenty-first for a hundred and twenty-five dollars, they end up booking, uh, uh, nine days, uh, in one fiscal year and seventy-two days in the other fiscal year. And so, you go through all of this math, the bottom line, I'm just gonna take the two numbers and add them together anyway, because we set the rates, we run the pool, and this is how much revenue we took in over the course of the season. So, you can see here that on the revenue side, and we have not received the donation and don't expect to see the donation from the Fishman family until the end of the calendar year. But as you can see, on the revenue side, we're ahead by about twenty-four hundred dollars. And on the expense side, and, uh, we're basically done spending money, uh, for this season. You know, there may be a little, one more telephone bill that comes in, but you can see we're, we're fifty-seven hundred dollars ahead on expenses. And of course, the pool, uh, they transferred about two thousand dollars, y- you know, from their accounts to start the, to start the year. So, if you look along the top, you see this nineteen eighty-six turning into thirty-one, thirty-four, turning into ten thousand, one twelve. Basically, that's just the, the growing of the fund balance. So, at this point in time, we closed the season, you know? It, it appears that we've got roughly a ten thousand dollar, uh, surplus, if you will, uh, uh, you know, based on the season. So, that's a good news. And then, now let me give you just a little bit of the bad news. Uh, when we were doing our due diligence, the one thing that we were concerned, the two things we were concerned with was, was the condition of the roof and the condition of the pump, all right? And the roof is fine and the pump is shot. So, uh, we brought the pump to Mativiers and it has been rebuilt before, but Mativiers said, you're done. Now, some of the parts associated with this pump are original materials, nineteen sixty-six pumps, all right? So, uh, so anyway, we, uh, decided that, uh, obviously it makes it a little easier when you got, you got some money sitting here, here in the bank, but, uh, it's probably gonna cost us, I'm gonna say about four thousand dollars to replace the pump. Probably three thousand dollars for the pump, another thousand dollars for installation. And there is a couple of sources of, of money, uh, along with, with these dollars here. And I've been in touch with the efficiency Vermont to see if they can help, uh, in the replacement of that pump, because obviously a pump, uh, a two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven pump certainly should be more efficient than a nineteen sixty-six. So, I think that there may be some dollars there, I don't, I don't know. Uh, also, uh, when the, you know, ten years ago or whatever, when they replaced the stainless steel gutters and got this hundred and fifty thousand dollar, uh, bond, there's still, uh, eight hundred and seven dollars and ninety-one cents at the Virgin's graded school district coffers. And it can only be used for pool equipment. So, so anyway, those dollars, uh, I don't have access to those dollars right now, but upon presentation of an invoice, uh, they will give us that, uh, eight hundred dollars. So, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, if we can get, you know, a third or a half of this pump, you know, recovered from either efficiency Vermont, uh, and this, uh, money, leftover bond money, uh, you know, we still should be in, in, uh, in good shape. Uh, the other two pages, I know Christine, uh, that for, for years, you've always wanted to see these spreadsheets right here.
I know, I'm still trying to figure out the first page.
Well, well, actually, let me tell you the first page, though, I built this, remember when, when Linda supplied us with, with the, the two thousand and nine season? Those are Linda's numbers, all right, that two thousand and nine. Now, obviously, the way, when I put this budget together, I didn't wanna group revenues. I wanted to split it up into the various categories to get a better handle on, you know, what are we charging for lessons? What does it cost us for lessons, all right? What do we, what do they charge for sw- swim team, what does it cost for swim team? So, on the revenue side, I've split that revenue up into, I'm gonna say more meaningful pieces so that we can analyze them a little better. And then on the salary side, you know, you know, Linda lumped all of the salaries together, all right? And that's not how I did it. I divided it up into, uh, various categories, no differently than I would a police department or a public works department, you know, so that you can get a much better handle on what your, what your expenses are. So, basically, you know, two thousand and nine are Linda's numbers, two thousand and ten is the budget that we used for fiscal year eleven. Now, the next two columns, you know, remembering that you got, you know, nine days, uh, of opening the pool in June and, and seventy-two days in, uh, July and August, that's how those expenses lie. So, to see what it cost you for the season, that's what the total line is. And so, then the variance is actually comparing the total for the season with the two thousand and ten budget. So, those are those, those, those various, those are those variances.
Mel, on that pump?
Yeah.
Is that including the fixtures that it's gonna be attached to and that's to be upgraded or?
Uh.
Does that mean the whole?
It's both the motor and the, and the pump, both, both pump and motor, there's a volute in there, it's the whole, you know, the whole shoot match, yeah. The other two pages, uh, that I worked on, I, and I, and, you know, I pick on Christine a little bit. I, I think there's always been some, uh, question, you know? The city historically has transferred six thousand dollars from the, from the watershed fund to subsidize the pool. And it has always been hoped, uh, that, that subsidy, you know, it does allow for reduced rates for Virgin's, uh, residents. But I don't know that anybody ever went through to find out really what that calculated to. And so, that's what I wanted to do. I wanted to find out what are the total discounts granted to, uh, granted to Virgin's residents. Uh, and of course, in this year, because that, uh, those discounts were also afforded to Waltam and Panton, I wanted to get a handle on that because next year, that's not the way it's gonna be. Only, only Virgin's is going to see a discounted rate. And so, there, therefore, the rate system that you all adopted automatically has some additional revenue because the Waltam and Panton folks will, will not get that, uh, reduction in the two thousand and eleven season. So, one of the, when you go through and look at these numbers, it works out that Virgin's residents for lessons and season's passes benefited from a, a little over three thousand dollars in discounts. So, uh, uh, that's something that, you know, I'll be taking a look at, you know, when the budget gets put together next May for the, for the ensuing year, so. And surprisingly, uh, a lot of people take advantage of the passes, you know, you, you. So and surprisingly, uh a lot of people take advantage of the passes, you know, you you if you look at the revenue stream there, I mean. Two-thirds of the, two-thirds of the money is from is from passes, now one-third is from is from uh is from daily admissions, so. The other piece that I actually analyzed today uh was the Mary Johnson fifteen hundred dollars, the uh you know. That's what they've always paid and that's what we felt was okay and did a little analysis to find out how many kids. From that program use the pool and how many kids were had passes and how many kids didn't. And surprisingly, there was eight hundred and eleven kid days uh that went to the pool. Uh and those kids did not have passes and obviously, if I if they paid the normal rate, they would've paid two bucks ahead. I mean, they're only there for an hour or two, but in essence, if they would've had to pay two bucks and so the eight hundred and eleven is sixteen hundred and twenty-two dollars. They paid fifteen hundred dollars, so as it's turned out, the fifteen hundred dollars is is a fair is a fair number. Uh to charge them and I spoke to Ann Gleason about that today and I think that what the question that Ann has is how are they gonna handle it? I think they've recognized the fact that forty-five percent of their kids have passes and fifty-five percent of their kids don't. And the parents pay the same whether or not they have a pass or not and I think that that uh you know, that's been brought to their attention and. You know, maybe they're gonna adjust their rates, but it does make it easier for us, uh you know, Joan has enough to do. Uh than count quarters and dollars, the idea of a lump sum payment for them, I I think it's a good. It's it's a, it's a good way to handle it, so. So Joe, I I do, I do think that the group, we we should get the group together, you know, in a month. Kinda go over things, but you know Roland will tell you that, you know, it's been the, it's been the easiest year that he's seen ever. Cross, we cross our fingers, so.
Couple, a couple of questions, I I know that Roland and Linda both offered to volunteer some services, is that something that we're we're gonna need to pay for next year or?
Li- li- Ro- we pay Roland, Roland has always been a paid employee and uh and actually.
Linda, I guess is.
Linda, Linda, yeah, and she's fine, I've talked to Linda uh.
I guess my question is, are we gonna see, after, is is she gonna, next year, I know we'll be reviewing this sort of budget, but are we gonna be needing to pay somebody? For some of the work she did this year, okay?
No.
So you're not gonna see?
No.
The second co- I guess more of a comment is that obviously, probably goes without saying that December was what, the second or third hottest ever especially?
Yeah.
So that's probably a, you know, I I worry that we may see a bit of a bump in revenues here and I don't necessarily count on if we have another summer like last summer. So we.
Right, right.
Probably wanna look at another year before we.
Yeah, yeah, well.
Decisions in terms of changing.
Yeah, and uh you know, you know, obviously, you know, if the Fishmans continue to donate two thousand dollars, that gives us, you know, we're we're. Our revenues end up being forty-four hundred, if you look at the discounts on the other two sheets that Waltam and Patton received. And I think it, the number's about three thousand dollars, if everything stayed the same, if the same number of kids. Or families from Waltam and Patton bought passes, took swim lessons, you know, there's an additional three thousand dollars worth of revenue that will. That will show up next year uh that isn't in this here, so you know, I'm 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 feeling pretty good uh uh about it. You know, uh you know, I can't really say enough about Roland, to be honest with you, I mean, that that is, I've mentioned it uh before, you know. He uh, yeah, we keep track of his hours, I'm sure he's not put them all down in his timesheet, uh and I don't wanna say he lives down there, but he takes care of that pool. You know, you know, the pool's open for eighty-one days and he's there eighty-one days.
Yeah, I really feel I did when that kids were there every day and I still do that that pool is a real jewel in the city and I'm really pleased that it's, you know. Not only is it look great, you know, but it's, it's showing that people will use it and appreciate it and it's shown up here.
Yeah, yeah, Linda, obviously, you know, Joan, Joan and Melissa have had, you know, you know, taken over a lot of, you know, Joan's work. We do payroll, we do payroll, I don't do payroll, Joan does payroll, so Linda doesn't have to do payroll, so uh Linda doesn't have to deal with any of the money. You know, so Linda's Linda's duties, if you will, uh have been reduced to assisting with, you know, swim team and lesson signup. And she handles all of the scheduling of uh of all of the employees down there, so we've, you know, I think that we've made her life. Uh a heck of a lot easier, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, obviously Foot's insurance was paying the bill for all of that work. Work that she did there, so we've taken that off her plate and she's absolutely fine to continue, there's a couple of long days. And uh and very little beyond that, uh so you know, I don't uh I don't really see uh. Pretty easy tran- pretty easy transition.
How much of the maintenance that Roland does has the, has the work department taken over?
There's some hidden, there are, there's no question about it, there are some hidden costs, you know, our crew does the mowing, you know, they go down basically every Friday. Uh garbage goes to the elementary school, we don't have to deal with their garbage, uh we did, for years, they used to use the fire department to. Upline, pump out the pool and that that doesn't occur, our our crew went down, you know, one morning and and did it. Uh you know, so uh yeah, there's, there certainly is, you know, the public works have absorbed some work. But it's not uh, it's not a huge, it's not a huge endeavor. And I I think that's the other thing that, you know, you know, Joan and I chat about is, uh you know, when we look at these rates and talk about discounts given for Jen's. You know, obviously, my time, Joan's time, uh other people's public works time, you're not seeing it in here. You know, that there is some, there certainly is some absorbed uh administration and public works costs associated in here. But it's been good, we look forward to next year.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the pool?
This, this has to be the first, the first town to ever operate a pool and then lose money.
They do lose money. When we looked over those, those sheets from the other towns, it was a little scary at first, but.
I mean, that's what I was, you know, recalling was that we saw all these numbers that were in, you know, horribly in the red.
Yeah.
I I'm sure if you would add the list of Jones, Mills.
We'd break even.
It would, it wouldn't be what it is, the 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 maintenance of the city crew.
And we're still putting six thousand in, uh you know, the, you know, the Fishman family, so you know, it, I I wouldn't say it's a moneymaker, but certainly. As Joe said, you know, some of the towns that we looked at, there were huge subsidies, we're talking fifty percent, sixty percent. You know, subsidy uh you know, by towns and those rates, they weren't any different than ours, you know, it's 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 not like they were. You know, selling family passes for ten bucks, I mean, their, you know, their their rates were comparable to ours.
They're closer to the lake or something, that's really surprising.
You know, I think Randy, a lot of it, and I don't know, uh I don't know anything about anything other than this pool here. There's a hundred and thirteen kids on the swim team, alright, every kid on that swim team is required to have a pass, alright? So you take a hundred and thirteen kids, you multiply it times either forty-five or sixty bucks, there's a revenue stream, alright? Lessons are huge, uh you know, the the fee is, it's a two-week lesson, there's three two-week sessions. If you're a Virgin's resident, uh it's forty dollars, if you're outside, it's fifty-five, if you look at the, if you look at the lessons, the lessons fees. Yeah, generates twelve thousand five hundred dollars, you know, so you know, what I wonder about if if other uh. You know, if if that's where maybe some of the, maybe some of the difference, uh differences are, you know, I don't know, you know.
I think it's sort of credit to you guys for allowing that structure to to continue, you know, and not, you know, I mean, it's been a. That that lesson and swim team has been such a strong part of that pool and and to allow that structure to move forward and continue under this new sort of. Under new, this new umbrella of the city.
Right.
You know, speaks well of of the, you know.
City drivers and.
Yeah.
Hey, it's it is the right thing, it's a positive thing. We're just, we're kinda how fuzzy and warm we were when we started the, started the process.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it was a little scary.
I have a friend in Shelburne, and he don't knows a lot of people and I had someone talk to me one day, oh, we brought, oh, we used to bring our kids down to Virgin's for swimming lessons. I said to Virgin's.
Well, the checks come from all over, right Joan, it's it's.
All through the whole family from Virgin, they went to Virgin's.
Alright, alright.
That's great. Super. Any other comments, questions? If not, we're going to, you all done with your report?
Yeah.
Uh, or before, before we get off Mel's report, I'm gonna just ask him. Uh were you aware, they've started digging over at Northland Job Corps on the sewer?
Yeah.
So that's, that uh Northland Job Corps sewer upgrade, it has been started to uh help mitigate some of the. Water that's coming in, they've found out sorts of surprises so far.
I'm sure, yeah, 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 I mean, it's a huge number, Mike, I I think I mentioned to the board before, I mean, we bill based on usage. If you take a month like, you know, this month, you know, you don't have any rain, you know, the the cracks in the ground are three inches wide, alright, so. You know, really, the the flow is at the absolute low, not uncommon to see daily flows down there thirteen, fourteen, fifteen thousand gallons a day. Last March, uh when it was a thaw uh and rain, in one day. Two hundred and fifty-three thousand gallons went into that sewer system, alright, twenty-fold, so that show, that shows, Mike, you know, how bad. Of of the system uh is in the ground over there, now, you know, obviously, you know, I, you know, we bill based on flow. And you know, we were gaining about thirty thousand dollars a year, you know, billing them based on our wastewater pumps. They tighten up their system, we're not gonna see that revenue, we're also not gonna see the flow, so so uh you know, the, you know. In theory, the the electric bill at the at the Northlands pump station will go down. The, you know, the flow coming into the plant will go down and so we should see some of it, now obviously, it's not dollar for dollar. We have a lot of fixed costs, you know, you know, we have employees, that's fixed, your debt, it's fixed, you know, there's, there's a number of things that are absolutely fixed. But we should see some reduction in our cost uh as they, as job corps, in essence, their bill, uh their bill goes down. But you know, it'll take us, uh you know, it won't be totally sealed, I think they're just doing the major trunk line is my. Cuz I think there's only a hundred thousand dollars or two hundred thousand dollars that was available, made available to them, so. It's the major source of infiltration, the line that runs from the gymnasium down through, it's it's a line that's in the ditch.
Yeah.
Where it is, so uh, so we should see a, we should see a difference pretty quickly.
A relatively broad but safe statement is the state is looking to dispose. Of some of its properties.
Good, good.
Can't go any further than that.
Okay.
Okay, paving of Comfort Hill, how we doing?
They should've showed up today, should've started today, I I uh late in the day, I know that the grader showed up. Uh I don't know that they laid any pavement today, but they're, they're here, uh we're doing all of Comfort Hill, you know. From uh from McDonough Drive right to the town line, uh all of High Street, uh that intersection up there, we rebuilt. There were the, the, the area where you could go from Comfort Hill and head like onto McDonough Drive towards Herb Ghee. That thing was just totally shot, uh there was a lot of, actually a lot of moisture in there and so that that little section there, we had Larry Minor come in and just rebuild it. To get a good base, so.
We'll go back.
What's that?
It's not being taken out, it will go back.
It's going back, yeah, it's going back, uh yeah, we we got some complaints about that and we said, well, it's fine, we'll we'll put it back, we uh. We thought we could do away with that section and reversed our decision, you know.
What section was that?
Well, but when you're coming from Comfort Hill, you can actually, the road kinda splits, if you're gonna go towards Herb Ghee's. Or you go on Comfort Hill and we thought about doing away with one of those sections and just, you know, bringing the, bringing the road up to uh. To a ninety-degree angle, got complaints from three property owners and, yeah, we just reversed our decision and. But we're just putting it back the way that it was, you know, it's, it's the way it is, you know, I uh, it's been like that. Probably, you know, for us to make that change, you know, it might even be argued that it's a discontinuance of a highway and you gotta go through some legal process. I just said, let's, let's just, let's just get a good base in there, rebuild it.
It's gonna get hammered.
Yeah. Uh and then we're gonna do the two sections on on McDonough Drive, the uh the hill uh near the Bixby. And for those of you that head out Sand Road, the section beyond Job Corps, absolutely terrible, you know, if you got a good car, don't go out that. Don't go out that road for another two, three days, gonna get that section down to about two-tenths of a mile and then of course, we're gonna do uh. North Maple Street where we did the the sewer line there Randy, uh at Mayo's and uh Paul Mayo's. Tiki Ringer and Raymond Ring, I'm I'm always calling Tiki Raymond's place, you know, that just needs an overlay, get that taken care of, so and uh. Should be, you know, should be good shape, I, when I did the math, I, you know, that'll use up, you know, that'll, you'll use up about a hundred thousand dollars. Of the hundred and fifty, you know, easily, uh so that was the, that was the goal. Good, I haven't done any paving for quite a few years in this town, so.
Make the city crew quite happy, I bet.
Very good, yeah.
Make the city, city uh guys real happy, huh crew. Um okay, we're gonna jump into new business, uh request extension of Farm Farmers Market, Chris.
I will make that motion that we allow them to extend their season into mid-October.
Second.
Joe got it out first, open for discussion?
The weather's getting longer and longer.
And one of my statements over here is welcome to fall, so uh motion made and seconded to approve that uh extension. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Thursdays, yeah. Um was it three, three to seven?
Yeah.
Three to seven, yeah. Item number B, proposed zoning and subdivision permit fee structure.
Yeah, this, yeah, I've been, uh, one of the things, uh I'm not sure if you all knew this, but the. The zoning permit fee structure that we currently use has been and existed since January one, two thousand and one. Alright, so it's been uh uh almost ten years and uh so I've. Uh the way that zoning fees are established, they're they're established by the city council and uh. Uh what I did uh was I made it a little bit of homework for the development review board to have them take a, take a look at it. And uh there's a memo in here, at one point when we, I gathered up information, uh I meet, I don't go to every quarterly zoning county. Zoning um uh administrators meeting, but I, but I try to, anyway, I gathered up. Oh, six or seven uh different towns, fee structures, try to find a pattern in there, but more importantly. Uh what, it's always been, you know, my philosophy that we should try to collect about fifty percent of our cost. And the theory being that, yes, people who are building things, developers, they obviously put a burden on on. On the staff, if you will, uh but also there's some general good, uh you know, zoning is a good thing and. And the the general public should be paying for some portion of zoning, so one of the things that appears is that over time. Uh the zoning fees that we're collecting weren't reaching fifty percent, uh and and obviously, if, you know, advertising costs. Uh go up, uh you know, stipends that board members receive, I mean, my my salary changes and so I just wanted to take a look at that. So what, uh along with taking a look at the revenues, I put forth uh a proposed uh change in fee. It obviously, uh you know, dog licenses are fairly predictable, you know, there's three hundred dogs in town. There always has been, always will be and that's, that's how many, that's how much we're gonna collect, uh zoning, not really predictable, you know, I mean uh. You know, I can remember a time where there was, you know, seven houses built in a year and I can remember a time when there was no houses built in a year, and so. What, that is one of the problems and realities of zoning is, is that it really is not, you know, some kind of a stable uh revenue stream for us. And as you can see on that, you can see there on uh the numbers where they range from four thousand to ten thousand, I think the year that was ten thousand. I believe is the year that the fifty-two unit uh bourgeois subdivision was approved, that's probably the line share of that ten thousand dollars, so. You're not gonna see those uh those kinds of things uh, you know, every year, so anyway, I've put together this proposal. My uh uh, you know, it it's totally up to the board, you know, whether or not you wanna take action on this tonight. Uh what I would like to do, uh uh if if you are are. Uh in favor of making this change, this is a change that would go into effect on January one, it wouldn't go into effect tomorrow, there'd be some. Time in there because, you know, for instance, relative to certificates of declaration of compliance that I do. All of the attorneys that work around here know that we charged, we have historically charged thirty-five dollars, alright, so we don't wanna just spring any of these. Uh any of these new rates, uh the old, the old rate structure actually had some confusion in it. Uh you know, if somebody needs a site plan and a conditional use, do they have to pay for both and so I've tried to streamline the thing that. Basically, if somebody has a uh proposal requires a public hearing, you know, it's a hundred dollar fee, that covers the advertising. It covers the, covers the preparation, the other change is the old order, the old rate structure had a different fee. As to whether or not you were, if you were building a garage next to a house that already was built, you paid one. as to whether or not you were, if you were building a garage next to a house that already was built, you paid one fee. If you had a vacant lot and you were building something, you paid, you paid double that fee. You know, to me, the fees just should be all the same. If the person pays ten cents a square foot, then everybody pays ten cents a square foot.
And your, my question is, uh, if, are you paying a hundred dollars for each of these individually? Or does one hundred dollars cover any at all?
Any at all, if, uh, right, if somebody, like, for instance, if somebody wanted to change the use of a business, let's say that, that, uh,
My building, for example.
Your building, alright, if, uh, if, let's say, the Boys and Girls Club were to move out and, uh, the new business that moved in there, because it's a change of use, they have to have site plan review. But also, if, let's say, the use that it was changing to required a conditional use, they need conditional use. We do combine review anyway, alright, when, when we do a hearing, I mean, we don't have a hearing on site plan review and a separate hearing on conditional use. We do combine review. So we write one notice, and so, so, it, it, that, yeah, that's a good question, Mike. If somebody needed site plan review, conditional use, and a height waiver, it's not three hundred dollars. It's a hundred dollars, it covers the notice, it covers the process, cover, covers the, the decision and covers the recording of that decision in the land records.
I was on the board when we did this, I can't believe it's been nine years. But anyways, I remember it took us at least two or three meetings just to come up with these figures, because, so you, you just, you didn't meet with the board. I mean, you did probably talk to the board about this.
Oh, yeah, that's, right.
Okay, but I'm telling you, it was, I couldn't believe how it was a pain.
I don't see a certificate of occupancy.
The certificate and declaration.
Oh, okay.
And the other thing that's a little different in the, in the, the old system, I used to have to estimate the land recording fees. And of course, I never know, some decisions may be one page, some may be two, some may be three, alright, and so, one of the differences is that these fees that I'm proposing includes the land recording fees. So if somebody pays, if somebody pays a hundred and fifty dollars, Melissa gets her ten dollar, you know, the land recording fee of ten dollars per page goes to her, you know, if it's two pages, it's twenty, if it's three pages, it's thirty. So, uh, it's not like we do, I, I'm just trying to make it easier on, on myself and on others to just set the fee knowing that the land recording is gonna be paid in full.
I make a motion that we accept Mel's proposed zoning and subdivision permit fee structure.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, open it for discussion.
Oh, effective January one of two thousand eleven.
Ziggy, agree with the mo- uh, the amendment?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Any other discussion? David had chance to look at this, or has he commented?
No, no, he doesn't, no, he hasn't.
Okay, well, we, we've got enough here to pass it, but if, you know, he had the opportunity to input and he just emailed, said he wouldn't be here tonight, or he was gonna try to be here by seven thirty at the earliest, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? So carried. Next one is see discussed problems with the current dog ordinance.
Yeah, Joan and, Joan and I have, uh, basically come to the conclusion that, uh, there's some changes. Uh, at least we feel that there's some changes needed in the dog ordinance. And we didn't wanna just go ahead and just write a bunch of changes and land these with you. What we wanted to do was talk to you about the problem, and if you agree with our, uh, suggested improvements then Joan and I, and probably George Merkel, we'd have George involved in this as, as well. Uh, go back to the drawing board and come up with some changes of which we would show you, you know, using a strikeout and underline so you can see what we would like to do. Uh, let me talk about my problems first, and I, I'll turn it over to you, Joan. My, one of the things is, is, uh, I, I do plan to meet with Mark Basil, uh, who, who is one of the owners or the owner, one of, the owner of Virgin's Animal Hospital, uh. Uh, there has been some problems relative to them being the pound, and I, uh, you know, to the point that uh, they actually have some very good, you know, they actually have some very good points. Uh, and what I mean by that is, is that the way the ordinance is written, it, it actually puts a lot of burden on the pound. Uh, meaning that, you know, somebody picks up a dog at four thirty-five on a Friday, Joan's gone home, Melissa's gone home. And the people come home and their dog's gone and it's at the pound. And you can't get your dog unless it's registered and you've paid the pound, the, the charges and get a release from Joan, and so what ends up happening is, is that, is that the way that the ordinance is written, it, it really puts the pound in the fine collecting business. And I really don't think, it's been that way for years and years and years. Uh, but, you know, people, uh, have become, uh, they aren't shy like they used to be. In the olden days, they'd come out, take their money out and pay. Uh, and they, yeah, they pay the, they'd be embarrassed and they'd pay the bill. Apparently, there's been some problems at the, at the, uh, uh, at the animal hospital where, you know, there's fees that need to be paid. You know, boarding fees and a fine and all that, and I really don't want, I don't, I, I really don't want the pound being in the fine collecting business for the city any longer. Joan and I, we can collect, we can collect fines, uh, that's what we do, alright, and I, the pound is providing a service to the city. You know, we don't own a pound, uh, they're our pound and, and we need them, and I wanna, and I wanna make their job as easy as it possibly can be. Uh, and I know that there's been some problems, and I hope to work out all the problems with Mark. So that, that's one of the changes that I wanna see, is to get this thing rewritten such that the pound keeper is, is never in the business of collecting, uh, fines or even their own boarding fees, to be honest with you. We would, we would bill for them, we would make the pound whole, and we will bill the, uh, the perpetrator, uh, if you will and, and collect those dollars. Knowing full well that, uh, you know, we don't collect every, we don't collect every dollar of a dog fine. I mean, there's, uh, there's sometimes, dogs sometimes get out of the pound somehow and we don't collect the fee, and there's some games playing that goes on, we've had instances where, uh, you know, the, uh, you know, the wife says it's the husband's dog and that wasn't my first offense, it was her second offense, you know, we, we just don't want the pound and we don't need Virgin's Animal Hospital having to encounter, uh, encounter those things. So that's, that's my area that I, that I wanna work on and get that in front of you as a possible change, and Joan can go over her, her problems.
Well, I have a specific issue right now in front of me. Um, last weekend, not the weekend we just finished, but the prior weekend, one of our pet owners who has two dogs, her two dogs were picked up three times that weekend. She is in the fifth.
Fifth one.
Fifth offense. So right now, you know, and the animal hospital collected the fine, they thought they needed to find, to collect. Because they don't keep a chart, it's not their job to keep a chart of every time a dog comes in there. And so this person owes me, what is it, two hundred and fifty dollars times three. She can't afford that, we're putting people in a position, they can't get their dog out of the pound, or if they can I do a payment pla- program, she didn't even offer that, she was just bawling, and I don't know what I'm gonna do, and I got a three-year-old little boy, and he let, leaves the door open and out they go, and, and, so I'm in a situation right now. Everyone else has always had to pay, she's my first violator, I think, for fifth offense. Yeah, she, she will be my first, so no one's ever had to pay the two fifty, that's too steep. People can't afford that, you know?
Speaking of someone who's worked on the pound, and the way, the way the, the way the fine is written is that for every registered animal. But people are charged, for two dogs, if they're caught, they're charged a first and second offense.
Right.
But that's not the way this is written, it says for every animal, so each animal, there should be two first offenses, two second offenses, two third offenses. If I'm reading this correctly.
Well, it's the owner, it's the owner that is the person in violation, the dog doesn't break the laws.
But the, the, you know, and I, and I understand what you're saying, but for every registered animal, it's the way, the way that, the way that, the way the statute reads, for every registered animal, uh, the sum of ten dollars should be paid to the city clerk. So it doesn't say for every owner, or whatever, you know, so two registered animals, but under the same owner, I mean, that, there's a little bit of that, that, no, I mean, I.
That's where the policy needs to go.
Right, and I, and I think that that, you know, that's created some ill will, believe me, quite a bit. That particular, you know, somebody has two or three dogs caught, that's not three first offenses, that's for a second, third offense. Even though they're only caught one time.
One of the things, uh, you know, I, and I think somewhere in, if you've been, if you've been, if you behave well for two years, you get the start over.
There is a two-year start over, that's why that sheet only goes back two years.
That's been rewritten the most, it's this one here, alright, I, I know it's been rewritten three times since I, since I left ten years ago, alright. And one of the things, let me just, let me just throw out to you, uh, would, would everybody agree that two hundred and fifty dollars is too much of a fine to be charged? I mean, we underst- I mean, I think, we understand that, you know, that you're trying to make people leash their dogs, I think we understand that. But does everybody agree that two hundred and fifty dollars is ridiculous?
I think we oughta recoup any cost to the pound.
Oh, yeah, we would do that.
Services.
That's in there as well.
The dog catcher and any other things, just make sure we coo- recoup our money and slightly above that.
I think every fine should just be fifty bucks, fifty bucks, fifty bucks, fifty bucks, I don't care if it's your fifteenth offense or your first. Fifty bucks, cause we have to pay twenty-five to the dog catcher immediately, and
And if, if we're gonna take over pound charges.
Well, I was gonna say, if the pound were to have to collect, they'd know, fifty bucks, one flat fee. If they aren't gonna do it, we know, bill them fifty bucks plus whatever boarding fees or whatever else is wrong.
Does the, um, dog catcher act on his or her own, or do they respond to complaints?
Both, the majority are based on police, a lot of times, the police officer calls them direct. Otherwise, he gets a call from dispatch, saying someone called in, there's a dog running loose, or.
The problem with this situation, honestly, who's, who's, who's the dog catcher?
Dog catcher is Joe Burbow and every member of the police department.
Yeah.
Okay, just curious.
The, the problem with this situation, she's right next door, so a dog comes out. What we were discussing, usually it's not normal, you know, but because of this situation with her, the dog probably walks, goes right up to the policeman and then he just takes him down to the pound.
No, where, where he's picked up, they aren't even near their home, no, they're running.
Alright, so they're not picked up right around here, I didn't know.
One, one of the offense was the actual, it was probably right in front of her house for one of the dogs. When it was running by itself, but the next night, they were way off.
So, so we'll come back with, uh, you know, if everybody agrees.
Just to make this thing simpler, you know?
Any, anybody disagree with them doing, going off and doing their thing with us and bringing it back to the council?
No.
No.
Done deal, okay.
I do have, I do have one little question, um, pertaining to like the, uh, the after hours. You actually have to put up with a dog barking for ten minutes before you can call in a complaint? If it's two o'clock in the morning, the dog's barking, I, I think you should have the right to, to complain after, say, five minutes.
This ordinance got rewritten three times since I've been gone, I can tell you that when I left in nineteen ninety-eight, there was, there was no minutes. Alright, there was no, there was no ten minute anything, I wouldn't, you know, uh, I own a dog, it, it might bark a little bit, but ten minutes is too long in the middle of the day. Uh, you know, some people are trying to take a, a nap, you know, I mean, that's just, you know, to me, if it's a disturbance, it's a disturbance. Like eight minutes, nine minutes, ten minutes, it's a disturbance, you know, shut the dog up. So we'll look at, we'll, we can look at that, Joan.
So, so how will I deal with this instance? I mean, I have the check in hand that she paid at the pound, and that the pound is turned over to me. But I, I need a waiver of this ordinance?
I'd ask, we, we wait till you give us something in, in writing? Just talk to the woman, say, we're, we're, we're going to look at our, our ordinance, and then we'll decide whether it's a go forward or go backwards, cause we don't, we don't wanna go back too far.
That's good, she has the final.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible that, that, that the fine system could be retroactive to X.
Yeah.
Cause I, also, I don't wanna start paying back.
Two years, five years.
Oh, we can work on, we can come up with some language there, Joan.
The other thing, as a goal, it would be nice to have this so we can finalize it and put it out with our, our, uh, next, uh, city voice which will be coming out in December, so I think we got plenty of time to.
Right, the way, uh, yeah, the way ordinances work, when you adopt, when you adopt an ordinance, uh, following your adoption, we put it in the newspaper. And it becomes law, I think, on the forty-first day, Joan? Forty, I think it's the fortieth or forty-first day, it's a weird law.
Yeah, I thought it was the forty-fifth.
Okay, whatever, it, anyway, that's how it works, and so that, you know, if we had this till, uh, in October, it will be in effect, uh, you know, by the newsletter.
I, I know that there's other citizens that have caught me and complained about dogs barking. And it's not just in one particular part of the city, it's, it's all over, so there is other situations. And so if we are able to shrink this down, or, another thing about the new website is we're able to have this on there, plus any copies that you saw up there tonight. Uh, there will be always four, um, city voices on the website. The previous, the fifth one will dump off automatically, so, he's, uh, that's another one of the beauties of that, so. Okay, um, any other discussion on that? If not, Mel and Joan, you've got another task to take care of? Okay, before we get to a few, get out of here, um, quite often I get emails, uh, I shouldn't say quite often, I say from time to time, I get emails complaining about situations, I, sometimes we'll get a card or a note. Uh, I actually have a note from a boater that was coming up, and I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Uh, but they really wanted to express their gratitude for offering the, the dockage. These people are out of, uh, Franklin, New Hampshire, they came in by boat, spent some time on, on the lake, and, uh, they really the whole thing with, uh, they frequented, frequented the, uh, Main Street and stores and whatnot, and, uh, really think we have a very lovely city and, uh, intend on coming back here in the future. So, anybody wants to go get that, um, by all means? Um, again, I will try to, uh, talk to, uh, Andy a little bit about some of the stuff that went on at the beginning about our new website that we're gonna be rolling out here very shortly. Um, I do wanna thank, uh, the city council members for attending Vir- Virgin's Day, it's the ones that were able to make it. And, uh, especially those that were in the crowd, uh, uh, when we did the, uh, key to the city award to Ann Sullivan. You run into her today, she still talks about that day, so she was extremely excited. Um, we are now the proud owner, or the repossessor, or I don't know how you word that. But we are now, uh, back in possession of the original city jail cell that was. Yep, that was, Deniker had it, and he has turned it back over to us, and as long as we promise not to misabuse it and, uh, we use it for the, all the right things. So, we already have a, an engagement scheduled for the Haunted Forest for the use, so. Um, like I said earlier, welcome to Fall, and the Haunted Forest meeting is, the next one is, uh, October fifth at five P M. down at Falls Park. We're gonna be, be doing a, uh, walkthrough again, talk about some areas that need touching up or, or correcting. Uh, and then we're gonna have a work day, or a part of day, depending on how many people, on October sixteenth, starting at eight o'clock in the morning. So, I believe that concludes. Yes, ma'am.
Did anybody see the news tonight? Apparently, there is this, this, uh, town that is opening up some kind of a museum. I didn't get all of it, but they, but their entryway, they copied from one of the schools of Virgin's.
Oh, that's Bay Eastern State's exposition, it's the school that's down on the grounds. It was actually the original, they, they copied the facade of the original Virgin's School.
So I got parts of it, I'm sitting down there like, go on, go on.
The school that's in Chalver?
Yes.
Yes, they copied the whole entryway of that, it was really nice, it's from the Jets.
Yeah, they kept saying it, so.
Yeah, Mike, one thing I forgot to mention, you had talked to me about this, uh, you know, obviously, it was, it's about retirement. Like, that, uh, you know, obviously lately, there's been a lot of press about South Burlington and, uh, in Rutland about their un- underfunded pensions, uh, I won't bore you with tonight, but I actually had lunch with, uh, Sandy Sanford Miller who's the new city manager in, uh, in South Burlington, I wanted to get the scoop as to what really happened there. But, you know, our, uh, just so folks here know, and people, people watch and employees, you know, the city of Virgin's, you know, uh, employees they do have a, we do have a pension plan, but They do have a, we do have a pension plan, but it's not self-funded like South Burlington or Rutland, you know, we are a member. Of the Vermont Municipal Employees Retirement System, you know, we, along with, you know, two hundred other municipalities and school districts. And libraries and it's all, you know, put into one fund, uh, which uh, is overseen by. Uh, you know, a govern, the governor's, uh, a governor's appointee, the, the state treasurer and then three or four other people that are. Elected to that board, I sat on that board for, you know, ten, fifteen years. And one of the things I, I'm gonna do is Cynthia Webster, who's the director of retirement for the state of Vermont, I wanna get a hold of. Uh, the latest actuarial, actuarial report, just to see the strength of, of the system. That's really what happened in the case of South Burlington was, you know, they too had actuarial reports done every year, but uh. Uh, either they didn't read them or, or didn't do what they recommended and the way that pensions, you know, work is when you do an actuarial study. You gotta find out what your unfunded liability is and you gotta budget money to go into that fund and if you don't do it every year. You can run yourself into a terrible situation and uh, the numbers for South Burlington are absolutely staggering, uh. Their, their fund uh, has eight million dollars in it and it should have seventeen. Alright, so they are underfunded by more than the fund itself, alright, and you know, what's happened is, is that. Some of the benefits that have been given to their employees. Anytime that there's an increased benefit to an employee, it costs money and uh, and you, you need to calculate, you know, someone needs to calculate. Actually, what you should do is find out what it's gonna cost before you, before you grant the uh, the benefit and then decide if you can fund it. And uh, and the reverse apparently was happening in, in South Burlington where there was some improvements to the pension system that they did not have money for. And when you, when you do that, you know, for six or seven years in a row, you know, it's like the old saying, you know, if you're, if you're, if you're in a hole. The first thing you wanna do is stop digging and uh, you know, that is not what, what happened, so. When I get that information, I'm gonna share it, you know, share it with others to, you know, let everybody know that, you know, that, that the, the strength of. At least our retirement system is, is uh, you know, is sound because it is, you know, it is fully funded, the rates that we pay for employees. Are the right rates, you know, they aren't, they uh, they aren't uh, underfunded, so I'll share that with you.
Very good, I know there's nobody here, but I wanna extend the thanks to the library board for all that they've done. Allowing us to take and occupy the space tonight and uh, maybe we'll try to come back again, so. We'll see how it, uh, how it plays out on camera, Lowell, will you do us the honors?
I make a motion, may I adjourn?
Second.
Randy, get it out first, I think, so Randy, you're second, all those favor?
Aye.